Time is six o'clock. I call the meeting of the Etoka City Council to order, ask everyone to rise. There's due the pledge of allegiance and the invocation. Face the flag, salute.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would you bow with me, please? Our most gracious heavenly Father, we come to you tonight, Lord, with heavy heart, just to ask you to lift up the Turner family. Lord, just give them your grace and compassion and show them your love, Father. Also want to lift up the Dell family, Father, for their loss and just be with them and continue to comfort them. Lord, just give us the knowledge to do the very best we can to operate the city and have it as beneficial for our citizens as possible. Lord, we just ask your blessings over this meeting tonight and safe passions for everyone on their way home this evening. We ask this in Jesus' name. Amen. So before we start this evening, our longtime council member, Mr. Pat Turners, passed away. So there will be no roll call for him tonight. So just be with the family. So. This time, would you call roll, please?
Yes, Mr. Cheryl.
Here.
Ms. McGee.
Here.
Ms. Poe.
Here.
Mr. Kathy.
Here. Again, thank everyone for being here tonight. As we move down the agenda, this is public comment time. If there's anything that's not on the posted agenda, we have three minutes.
Is she not on agenda today?
Yeah, she is. So hearing none, we will move down to business agenda. Item number one, discussion and/or action regarding approving or rejecting the minutes of the meeting on July 7th, 2025.
I recommend approving.
I'll second.
And a motion, a second roll call, please.
Ms. McGee.
Yes.
Ms. Poe.
Yes.
Mr. Cheryl.
Yes.
Mr. Kathy.
Yes. Item number two, discussion and/or action regarding accepting or rejecting the city manager's report. Mr. Deley, good evening, sir.
Good evening, everyone. My report's on number, attachment number two. I'm sorry if anyone has any questions.
Any questions for the city?
Any questions? I recommend approving.
I'll second.
Have a motion, a second roll call, please.
Mr. Cheryl.
Yes.
Ms. Poe.
Yes.
Ms. McGee.
Yes.
Mr. Kathy.
Yes. Item number three, discussion and/or action on approving or rejecting the payment of purchase orders for the city of Etoka for the month of June 2025.
I've reviewed all those and those are on attachment number four. Anyone has any questions?
Recommend approving.
I'll second.
Have a motion, a second roll call, please.
Ms. McGee.
Yes.
Mr. Cheryl.
Yes.
Ms. Poe.
Yes.
Mr. Kathy.
Yes.
Item number four, discussion and/or action regarding accepting or rejecting the mutual aid agreement between the city of Etoka and the town of Tuska. Good evening, Mr. Melons.
Good evening, council. This is the same agreement that we got in place with, like, Stringtown. Tuska sent it through their council meeting and approved it. We're just needing a signature. This is the one that Johnny drawled up and approved about, or we talked about like two months ago in a meeting. It was going to be between Tuska and Kane. Kane hasn't got back with me yet, but Tuska's ready to go ahead and sign and get it done.
Just, I forgot. What was the mutual aid agreement?
It's for the storm sirens.
Oh, okay. Okay. Now I remember now. Any questions? I recommend approving. I'll second.
The motion's a second roll call, please.
Ms. Poe.
Yes.
Ms. McGee.
Yes.
Mr. Cheryl.
Yes.
Mr. Kathy.
Yes. Travis, thank you. Item number five, discussion and/or action on setting or adjusting the rates for use of downtown public park slash green space. Specifically, the rate charged for the reoccurring second Saturday artisan market. Good evening, Ms. Cheryl.
Good evening. How is everyone? And I, um...
Do you bring your bodyguard with you this evening?
Of course. We have coalition meeting afterwards, so we're going to shoot over to that next. Okay, so I know I kind of mentioned it last meeting. My name's Heather Gabory. I am the one who started the second Saturday markets back in October of last year, and it's continuing. We took a break in the winter. We're taking a break over these hot summer months because nobody wants to go out in the heat and shop, nor stay up, set up all day. So basically, with the stage coming in, my original vision for what happened back in 2023, when they did the first Wampus Cats Craft Fair, and I saw that turnout and I saw them utilizing the plaza, and I just thought it was amazing. I thought this should happen every single month in downtown Etoka. There should be vendors set up. There should be families walking around shopping and also shopping our small businesses downtown, right? Because the Rebus thing came and then it's kind of dropped as far as foot traffic and things like that go, which is natural. So I kind of put a bug in a few people's ears about it and nobody jumped on taking the helm, so to speak. So I said, okay, I guess it's my turn to do this. So I just did it. And our first one was on the green space in October of last year, and we had about forty vendors and some food trucks. And we had a couple local musicians just set up and bring their own speakers and play on the grass. And it was really well. It was a really good turnout. And then we took the winter off. We didn't do anything else because of all the other things that were going on in November. Started it back up again in March, and then we got rained out. And then in April, we had to move to the plaza because the green space was fenced up. And then we did, and our one in May was our Mother's Day market, and it was, there were people down there all day with us that were shopping. And so it was, it was really, really awesome to see. I don't know if any of you have been down to check it out when we've been set up. And then June was kind of iffy because we had a good windstorm come through and knock down a bunch of tents. And even with weights on them, that wind through that little tunnel right there is crazy. So now that the stage is nearing completion, my original idea was it would be so awesome to see music going on during the same time as these markets. Just local musicians, nothing astronomical, like forty-eight hours or anything like that. But I just didn't know if there was going to be a rate change for either, for A, utilizing the green space. I paid two hundred back in October for it, which is easily coverable by vendor fees. And that's no problem. I mean, I'm to the point now where I can go ahead and pay for this entire fall plus the Wampus Cats Craft Fair, which has now been asked that we do that instead of Lynn and Cindy doing it. They asked that we do it. And we're also running the show for the vendors for another forty-eight hours, which is completely separate. So just wondering if we wanted to utilize the stage for local musicians to come plug their, their own speakers in, their own thing, just for a day like that. Is it going to cost, add to the cost? Or, and then if it is, if it's not, can we, is that cost just to rent the green space going to be the same? That's my question, I guess.
I think we get touched by that with the law, yeah.
We had, we haven't nailed down anything, and there needs to be discussions on what that's going to look like until we were able to get the stage completed and, and move forward with that. The, we have another item on another agenda to discuss some of the finishing touches to the stage and would that have an impact on those pricing points? So those, now that we have some of that pricing on what that's going to cost, to try to factor in that on the screen portion, if we move forward with that, what that would do to the structure of how you rent or advertise or, you know, if some of your vendors want ads up on, you know, those are all options. But there hasn't been any discussion on what the actual stage portion of it is going to be. You know, of course, you know, like, if we do movie nights and things like that, those, those kind of things would be, you know, community involvement type things where there wouldn't be a charge for those kind of things. But I, I go, I'm not speaking for the rest of the council.
Right.
You know, it'd be my opinion that if we do, you know, there needs to be some free items there for, for families and things of that nature to be able to enjoy and come out and do. But, you know, I don't have a direct answer for you on what cost of the stage itself. Now, you're utilizing the same square footage of grass that you were before, you know. To me, that, that part would be the same. Now, it's just trying to factor in, get the council board to figure out.
The other thing that, again, this is way early and, and no matter what probably is decided now will be changed within the year as we get into it and find out what we don't know. But, you know, if you, if there are bands booked, you know, we have to, you know, we're, we're going to have to decide, you know, this, if we're bringing in a band and it happens to be on that Saturday, you know, there's going to, we're going to have to figure out something, how that's going to work, and I don't know the answer.
I think that's building a master calendar for that whole space, so you're not overlapping. Or if you are overlapping, how do those two merge?
Yeah.
You know, on scale. I don't think there's anything wrong with, with multiple things going on in downtown at the same time.
Yeah.
And I don't go against either.
Yeah, I was already approached by the trail riders because our first one is scheduled for September thirteenth, and they have their parade that same day. So I was already approached, and she was like, she was like, you know this? And I'm like, absolutely. I think it would be amazing. And she was on the same page. She thinks it would be awesome to have both things to benefit everybody, basically. It, that's the idea behind this is just to be beneficial for the community as a whole. So.
But, you know, if there is a concert, Kobe, like you're talking about, and they're on a schedule coming through and it's that day, what do we do? You know, how do we adjust that, you know, if it fits in there? You know, so those are things that we'll have to work through as we go along, but.
And we're, when is the forty-eight hours? Because I'm sure, when is that scheduled in November? So, I mean, we've, we need, we're going to have, have something.
We've got to have, yeah, we've got to have it before that.
Are you on that board also? So you know when it, you know, is it the same day?
It's November first.
But is it, okay.
But we're doing vendors on Court Street i- in the parking spaces where the vendors are going. So it, the green space will just be for the music itself.
Yeah.
Yeah. But I, I get your saying as far as lining all that out. Yeah.
But I do think, and this is just my opinion, I do think the city should be able to cosponsor an event and waive fees if it's going to bring commerce and, and people here to spend money and, I mean, economic development. We want to, I think the city needs to reserve that right to be able to say, we'll cosponsor with you and whatever, you know. We can't do everything, obviously, because this is an expensive stage.
I know.
And being in an artisan market, we're giving the community opportunity to share, to show their arts and crafts and create and make an income. For some people that do this on the side as a hobby can make money. Now, the vision with the stage, if you can picture it, you've got music going, right? You've got the booths coming down the sides and the food trucks going.
Comes with a salesman.
You know, you can see it, like, Denison in the park, they do the same thing, similar. It brings a ton of people. So that's all we're doing. I mean, if we don't benefit this in any way, it's just for the community.
It's going to be five oh one C three pretty soon.
We're givers.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, we do, I do know Carol started way back.
And we don't have a nice.
Put some things together on how that should work and put some fees, and she spent, she and Cindy both spent some time on that. We need to, we need to get that.
Review it.
And we all have a chance to look and say, this, this looks reasonable or this doesn't, and.
That might not be want, something that Danny want to do. We might need to leave a look at hiring a, a season manager or something too, you know, we.
Well, and it's.
Well, he, we, we definitely don't want him booking talent.
So we don't want to do any more than, we don't want to do any more than he has to do.
That's not, not for today.
But that is going to have to be a thing. Somebody, we're going to have to figure out, you know, somebody's going to have to book that. And it's going to be a big job because, and the first year, I think we'll be taking what we can get because we don't, we're, aren't, we didn't know when this was going to be finished, and so we couldn't really book anything. So for the first year, I think we're going to try to, like Brian said, catch people when they're coming through the areas and try to. So the schedule's not going to be set in stone in the first year, for sure.
But to, to your point, I mean, the goal is to try to motivate people to be in this nice area.
You guys have done so much.
The amount of, well, and the amount of private investment that's gone back into town since the development of the revitalization of most of the buildings downtown. And that's, that's huge, and we've got to keep that momentum. And, you know, this, this being a component of that, how do we move that forward to the right way? We're, like Kobe said, we'll probably have to punt and, and make some changes along the way. We're, we're definitely not going to ride any of this in a, in a block of granite, so it can be changed as needed. But applaud you for your efforts and what you do with the second Saturday. I think it's an amazing venue to have an opportunity for people to come visit our town that a lot of them would never stop. And then that's, it's things they enjoy doing, and they're going to go to a town that has those kind of venues and attractions going on.
And homecoming, when, what day is homecoming?
The third.
Third and the fourth of October.
It's later.
Yeah, so that one, because I announced all of them, all of the markets, kind of at the same time for the fall, including forty-eight hours. And that one hasn't had a lot of traction for vendors, unfortunately, so I'm hoping that we'll get more. We kind of talked it over, and I said, you know, it's a two-day event. Like, how do we utilize? Before, they would just let them keep their tents up on the plaza. Well, it's a more secure area, right? The plaza seems to be than the green space. So we're just telling them if they want to do both days, they have, it's on them. Like, our insurance won't cover your, your deal, so.
Well, I think, you know, to answer the, the first part of this agenda item, we need to discuss the two hundred, I guess, is what it was before for the green space.
I'm totally fine with that. I just don't know.
Get back with you on kind of the stage here within the next month, month and a half on that, if that would work.
I mean, we'd love to work with you guys.
Yeah.
I would, I would like to. That's what I was just going to say. I'd like to get, once we get that information, I'd like your input.
Yeah, absolutely.
We're not, we're not.
See what we can do. I mean, who knows? We can help local talent and yet bring in a, you kind of see how Denison's bringing in a, a celebrity or whatever, a guest, you know, someone to carry around.
You know, some of our local restaurants do a really nice job with, with the music on throughout the week. To the point where now it's a couple of days a week that some of the music's going on in, in the restaurant in the evenings. And, and it's, and they bring in a, a super talented local folks that get to show off, get to show off their.
There's so much talent locally.
I had no idea until I went here.
It's blown our minds.
I didn't know what it was like. I'm used to the. I'm from California, so this is great to see. I don't have the patience. But, yeah, we're blown away with the talent. I think we need to show what Etoka has to offer.
Absolutely.
I just want to put in my couple of scenes because I agree with Kobe. This, you know, when we started the stage, that was one of the things that we were really wanting was to bring in people that I really thought we were going to try to operate through no charges. So that way, that was the city's sponsorship, basically, kind of, you know, that's why I was really disagreeable with the forty-eight hours because I thought that was our purpose for this, was to bring in people that wanted to sell stuff or do any of that. And that was the city's part in this, was we built the stage. And we put it in, and, you know, because remember we talked about, like, the big screen doing yoga and.
Yeah, I still think that's a thing.
And that's going to be like community events. So you're going to, if you do a price structure, you're going to have to do it what's going to profit and what's not. Because your yoga instructor isn't going to profit from that.
Well, and, and part of that formula that we looked at originally, Erica, was, you know, based on, a lot of that information came from, you know, Arx being out in Bartlesville, going up and looking at that facility and how they schedule and structure and charge for the use of that facility up there. And they do charge for it. And, you know, certain things the city can choose to, to sponsor or those, those other entities that utilize that facility, go find a sponsor to sponsor the charge to the city to. And I'm, and we've done that already. And, and, you know, I know there's been individuals that have sponsored things in the plaza for the forty-eight hours and things of that nature. So that it didn't come from the city. It was an individual that just said, hey, take care of it. You guys can have your event, and they paid for it. So, you know, those are things that are factors in how we structure what we're going to do. And, you know, the question is, like, if we have movie nights, you know, what's the, what's the fee that we have to pay to be able to show a movie for the rights? And those kind of things, that's the issue. So those, you know, if we do a free movie night, that's something that the, the city's probably going to have to get figured out how we structure the payments on that and for family-friendly shows to, to have everybody come out and have a good time and, and, you know.
Well, that's what, the banks are supposed to sponsor that stuff.
I think so. I think that seems like it.
It does seem like it.
Or Inca could do a year's worth of.
I don't have any sponsorship money.
Okay, so there you go.
But no, you know, but I think that, that was, you know, if we had to have sponsors, I think that was where people were thinking was your, your businesses would sponsor those type of things.
I do, and I do think there needs to be. If they choose to. There needs to be a good balance of free versus charge.
Yes, yes.
Yeah. We can't, I mean, not only do you have the cost of construction, but you have the cost of keeping maintenance. And if we want to keep this facility at the caliber it needs to be to keep drawing people to the area, then there has to be some form of revenue that comes in.
Yeah, we're, we're one hundred percent okay paying for whatever. I just, we just kind of need to know so we can budget. And if we need to reach out and say, hey, during second Saturday's, First Bank is, it's the First Bank stage on second. I don't know, you know, something like that on second Saturdays.
And those are things we all have to, to determine. That's from the marketing standpoint of, of the screen and things of that nature.
For the chamber people, you know, that would be cool if they sponsored that, that day or something like that. That way their business is what's sponsored. You know, it shows up.
And so those are all things that, you know, and there would be opportunity for, during the screen, would still be operational throughout the week, even when something wasn't going on. If there was an event going on throughout the week with this caliber of media that we have, you, you have the ability to sell advertising on there.
Right? That's a good idea.
Yeah, that is.
So those are, and what does that structure look like? So those are other things that we have to discuss. When we're talking about the charge on the stage is what's the marketing? And then, okay, for special events, this, this one sponsored this, so boom, they're up there.
And you don't even know what the price of electricity is going to run after you have a concert.
Correct.
So, I, we totally get it. So like you said, master schedule, calendar, teams worked out.
I woke up the other night, in the middle of the night, and I just, that's what I was thinking about. The stage was almost finished. And we didn't even have the stuff ready. I texted Andy the next day, or I may have texted him that night. I don't know. But I was like, we got to get on that. This thing's about done, and we don't even have anything.
You need to take one night, and you're like, oh, I didn't realize it was that late, and I'm like, oh.
Yeah.
We probably need to get with Johnny when he's here, and we need a policy, you know, to reflect what's going to be.
During the last meeting, he was, he was going to research some of that, but he, of course, he's not able to be here tonight.
Yeah.
But to, to help get you on the same path.
Yeah.
That structure, if that's something we need to vote on right now, or we want to just say that's it, and we'll get with Johnny and ratify it when Johnny's here or something to that point.
For the green space itself or for the stage and the, because I.
It would just, for right now, it'd be just on the green space.
Just the green space.
So we'd come, we'll get, we'll, we'll get our heads together and figure out, we'll get some, some different ideas and get that all bullet pointed out and voted on. Here's the structure so that the city staff, that way it's fair.
Yeah.
Everybody knows what everybody's doing.
Yeah, absolutely.
I've reached out to a couple of cities, but they didn't have anything structured either, so there weren't any help.
Well, the ones I've reached out to are, it outpriced us. It's, it's, it's out of our, it's out of our market. They priced them for bank, big bands and, and it cuts everything else out, and that's, we don't want that either. It's why it's, it's just going to take some, a little bit of time to put that together, and we need to. When's the, when's the completion date? September first?
No, they should be through in the next couple of weeks.
Yeah, the next couple of weeks.
Oh, great. Thanks.
I'm going to just take a hat off.
Don't have some nightmares tonight.
We'll just delete, we'll just delete a couple more nights.
I'm going to, I'm going to take one hat off and put another hat on. The, I am also the chamber director, as you guys know. So the chamber, you guys are members. As the city, you're members. So anything that you guys have going on that stage, get it to me, and we'll get it on our email list out to five hundred plus people that we have on there that's growing. And also, we would love to do a ribbon cutting when the stage is completed.
Absolutely.
And have everyone there and bring another forty-eight hours crew because they're members of the chamber as well, too. And have everyone there and bring another forty-eight hours crew, because they're members of the chamber as well, too, so I thought it would be just kind of a cool.
Well, on the green space, though, we've already had events on the green space, so.
What they've done before is they paid two hundred dollars a day to utilize.
So we just need to, so can we just?
I don't think we have to vote on that, but what we, we just, we'll verify that with Johnny and if we need to, we'll put it back on and
Okay, and once that's done, I'll just come in and take care of the dates that I have ready for the fall.
Very good.
Well, until, until we have a new structure in place, that's in place, right?
Right.
And so we don't need to do anything.
That's what I thought, it's already there, so I just leave it on for now till we know.
So shall we vote to leave their fee structure as it sits, since we already have it?
That's not on yet.
No, that's, I mean, it's, that's not, I mean, it's, it says specifically a rate chart, a rate charge for the recurring.
Well, that's what I'm saying, is we can charge the same rate.
If somebody else uses the same space, they're paying the same amount.
Oh, okay.
So.
But if there's changes for utilizing a stage, we'll just have to figure that out when the time comes.
Yeah, if something comes up, I'll let you know sometime.
And I don't, yeah, I don't have any plans to use it September thirteenth or October, anytime before another forty-eight, unless that's something that y'all may wanna do to work out bugs before that big thing, I don't know, but I don't, it was just a, down the line, if we wanna do this, how can we fit that in our budget? So, that was all. Well, thank y'all so much.
As soon as that screen has power, I, I plan on firing it up and having a movie night. I mean, that's the very first, I mean, in my mind, we need, we need to do a free thing.
Shake now, yeah.
Soon as that thing's open, so, um, thank you for all you're doing. Chamber's really doing great.
Thank you.
And that event the other day, top notch, that was, that was nice. The legislative luncheon, that was
The legislative luncheon?
I mean, that was set up very nice.
Yeah, looked great.
Thank you. I'm glad you enjoyed.
And had a great, and had a great response.
There you go. Good man there.
He wasn't there, he was in the city. I don't know about listening to politicians, but the, the space was great.
It was, and I wanted to make it a little more than what our normal membership luncheons are, you know?
That was nice, nice touch.
And it worked out well.
More food than she did, though.
Yeah, I know, yeah.
Thank y'all.
Thank you.
Yeah.
All right, as we move down, is there any council comments? Hearing none, do I hear a motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion. I'll second. Y'all have a good day.
Motion second, roll call please.
Mr. Cheryl?
Yes.
Ms. McGee?
Yes.
Ms. Poe?
Yes.
Mr. Kathy?
Yes. As we move into our next meeting of the evening, Etoka Municipal Authority, would you call, roll please?
Ms. Poe, here. Mr. Cheryl?
Here.
Ms. McGee?
Here.
Mr. Kathy?
Here.
It's public comment time, if there's anything that's not on the post agenda, I may address the board at this time. And hearing none, we'll move down to the business agenda. Item number one, discussion and/or action regarding approving or rejecting the minutes of the meeting of July seventh, twenty twenty-five.
I recommend approving.
I'll second.
Motion second, roll call please.
Ms. Poe?
Yes.
Ms. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Cheryl?
Yes.
Mr. Kathy?
Yes.
Item number two, discussion and/or action on approving or rejecting the payment of purchase orders for the Etoka Municipal Authority for the month of June twenty twenty-five.
Uh, those have been reviewed as well, and those are on attachment number two, if anyone has any questions.
Any questions on those?
Almost to approve.
I'll second.
Have a motion, second, roll call please.
Ms. Poe?
Yes.
Ms. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Cheryl?
Yes.
Mr. Kathy?
Yes. Move down, is there any trustee comments?
Uh, hearing none, do I hear a motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion. One second.
Motion second, roll call please.
Mr. Cheryl?
Yes.
Ms. McGee?
Yes.
Ms. Poe?
Yes.
Mr. Kathy?
Yes. Move into the next meeting, the Etoka Industrial Facilities Authority, would you call, roll please?
Ms. McGee?
Here.
Mr. Cheryl?
Here.
Ms. Poe?
Here.
Mr. Kathy?
Here.
Item number two, public comments, if there's anything that's not on the post agenda, I may address the board. And hearing none, we'll move down the agenda. Item number one, discussion and/or action regarding approving or rejecting the minutes of the meeting of June sixteenth, twenty twenty-five.
I recommend approving. I'll second.
Motion second, roll call please.
Mr. Cheryl?
Yes.
Ms. McGee?
Yes.
Ms. Poe?
Yes.
Mr. Kathy?
Yes. Item number two, discussion and/or action regarding accepting or rejecting the sports complex manager's report. Mr. D, does this go to you this evening?
You on this one?
Yeah, I'm on that, I'm sorry.
Destry's on it, he's on it. There's one here.
Yeah, it's, it's listed there, I'm sorry.
Yeah, it's got all the schedules and everything.
It's sports one, they, it's both, uh, both.
I like that they're still doing the flag football.
Yeah.
Well, it's, uh, finally have some, finally have some weather that's dry, so they can actually have some games, so.
Yeah, so Destry's got his fall schedule, basically, there at the bottom. Like Erica said, the flag football's mentioned there last.
That'll be great.
Almost to approve.
I'll second.
Motion second, roll call please.
Ms. Poe?
Yes.
Ms. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Cheryl?
Yes.
Mr. Kathy?
Yes. Item number three, discussion and/or action on, on, can't talk, on approving or rejecting the payment of purchase orders for the Etoka Industrial Facilities Authority
for the month of June twenty twenty-five.
I'm almost to approve.
I'll second.
Motion.
I'm sorry, I jumped out a little bit.
Motion second, roll call please.
Ms. Poe?
Yes.
Mr. Cheryl?
Yes.
Ms. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Kathy?
Yes. Trustee comments?
I've got a question. Um, we've been having some incidents at the splash pad, um, where it's just being on, a lot of feces on the pad and everything. Do we need to look at maybe some cameras or something for that, or not? Cause I mean, it's, it's happening, it seems like it's happening more than what it needs to be.
Yeah, it's more than it should.
Yeah, once it's more than it should.
Yeah, yeah, and I sure don't wanna be responsible for.
How many times has something been reported?
Uh, probably about three.
But, you know, you'd have, you, we'd have to get with, uh,
I'd have to visit with Gene, probably, I didn't see what his thoughts are.
That's fine, I just, you know, seems like if it gets in that water and, and then next day, you know, somebody's out there and
Yeah, it's just disinfecting everything, cleaning it all, um, the, uh,
They're out there with the jet machine and everything, a couple of times.
Yeah, and they do, and I appreciate that, too.
You know, they'd have to, we'd have to try to mount something off of the restroom facility there. Uh, you know, the, the, the original idea was have a brand new set of restrooms right there, so that if there was a need to use the facilities, you have an, another opportunity to do so.
Is there no bathrooms out there?
Yes, ma'am.
I know there is.
My point.
It doesn't make any sense that people are doing that on the splash pad.
That's not fair to use a restroom in the bathroom, either.
Because it's not like the bathroom's not there, and I know there's been a lot of people on Facebook grapping about it, well, for, they started grapping about the bathrooms were bad. And then it was that it's on the splash pad, and my whole thing was, okay, why are we going on the splash pad? There's bathrooms, so.
Those are just
And if the bathrooms are disgusting, well, it's the people that are out there, you all have to take care of our stuff.
We don't have any money there twenty-four hours a day, you know, or when it's open.
We wanna keep it, and we wanna keep it for free. If we, I mean, you know, that kinda stuff, that's when charges start getting put on, because
And, uh, and, you know, what I've told people, they're gonna have to start reporting.
Yes.
When you're out there and you see somebody doing something, you gotta call and report it. That's the only way it's gonna get fixed.
Or we have some cameras.
Yeah, but I don't know, I don't, I mean, I don't know if they're gonna catch anybody.
A lot of times, they'll, they'll turn those down.
How would we know?
That's true, you gotta put them white, you're gonna have to put them really white to do it.
I put some out of City Lake, and those all got stolen.
And you'll have to get some really good ones to be able to see from that far up.
Okay, so Danny, you're gonna visit with Gene, see what opportunities are.
I don't know what the answer is either, but it's ridiculous that we're having to have a conversation with somebody.
That's exactly my thoughts.
Okay, so, uh, that's, that's just a comment, so we'll move forward and, and get with the, on, we'll address that on another item, okay.
Well, and we could've adjusted on the, the report, too, I mean, you know.
Yeah. Um, okay, so, any other comments? Hearing none, do I hear a motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Motion second, roll call please.
Ms. McGee?
Yes.
Ms. Poe?
Yes.
Mr. Cheryl?
Yes.
Mr. Kathy?
Yes.
What is it?
As we move in.
Hold on, wait, sorry.
You said we couldn't talk about it anymore.
Oh, we can't?
That's what I said.
Oh, okay.
It's just a comment, we can't get into a big discussion over a comment. We'll, we'll look at it and get back and bring it back to another agenda item. Uh, Tokyo City Industrial Development Authority is our next meeting, would you call, roll please?
Ms. McGee?
Here.
Ms. Poe?
Here.
Mr. Cheryl?
Here.
Mr. Kathy?
Here. It's public comment time, if there's anything that's not on the post agenda, I may address the board. And seeing and hearing none, we will move down to business agenda.
Item number one, discussion and/or action regarding approving or rejecting the minutes of the meeting of July seventh, twenty twenty-five.
I recommend approving.
I'll second.
Motion second, roll call please.
Mr. Cheryl?
Yes.
Ms. Poe?
Yes.
Ms. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Kathy?
Yes. Item number two, discussion and/or action regarding accepting or rejecting the Economic Development Director's report, Mr. D.
That is, uh, on attachment number two, if anyone has any questions.
Recommend approving.
I'll second.
Motion second, roll call please.
Ms. McGee?
Yes.
Ms. Poe?
Yes.
Mr. Cheryl?
Yes.
Mr. Kathy?
Yes. Item number three, discussion and/or action on approving or rejecting the payment of purchase orders
for the Tokyo City Industrial Development Authority for the month of June twenty twenty-five.
And then those have also been reviewed in our own attachment number three, if anyone has any questions.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Have a motion, second, roll call please.
Ms. Poe?
Yes.
Ms. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Cheryl?
Yes.
Mr. Kathy?
Yes.
Item number four, discussion and/or action on amending the redevelopment agreement between DF Capital LLC to extend the phase one deadline from February first, twenty twenty-six, and to provide similar extensions for later phases.
Why did he call me about that? And I told him to send us something for y'all to approve, uh, like us, he's had trouble with the weather, uh,
What's the, what is this?
Sixth Street.
Sixth Street project.
Oh, okay.
We've had the same thing, we've, we haven't been able to get our stuff, uh, done in the time we wanted to, so.
How, when are they wanting the extension to? To, to one?
Two, two, one, twenty-six, for the first phase.
Okay, so the first extension, okay, so the first due date was done one, and they were supposed to have what done?
Yes. Was it ten?
Ten houses.
Ten houses, okay. So now we're gonna move it.
Does the widening of the road include, is it, that included?
No, that's, we're doing that, yeah. And that's what I'm saying, we're, we're behind on that because of the weather.
Yeah.
Every time we do a little bit, it rains and, and we, we can't do nothing, it's clear days, cause the machinery's too heavy, uh, we'll sink, you know.
So we're giving them five-month extension?
Yes.
Okay. Almost to approve.
I'll second.
Motion second, roll call please.
Ms. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Cheryl?
Yes.
Ms. Poe?
Yes.
Mr. Kathy?
Yes. Item number five, discussion and/or action on executing a quitclaim deed in favor of Joe Jones and the estate of Raymond Jackson, deceased,
to extinguish the first right of refusal contained within the warranty deed recorded in May twenty-second, two thousand two, in book six twenty-six at page two, or three twenty, for property in the northwest quarter of the southwest quarter of section ten, township two south, range eleven east.
Okay, Johnny was gonna explain this, and so, uh, I had Susan reach out to him and sent this, I'm gonna read this to you. When Acida sold the property to Jones and Jackson, Acida retained a right of first refusal to buy it back.
With the, what are we talking about, that little building behind?
Jones and Jackson cabinets.
Okay, that's what I'm, okay, gotcha.
Uh, now that Raymond has passed away, uh, Joe Jones is wanting to sell his interest to Josh Jackson, Jackson, which is Raymond's son, and the son is wanting to, uh, keep the business operational. They can't complete this transaction until Acida relinquishes their right to buy it back. So the board can either decide tonight to buy the property back for three hundred thousand, or approve the quitclaim deed to give up the right of first refusal.
Okay, so if we give up the right for this instant, would we give it up completely, or could we have it for the next instant?
I was thinking of that as I was reading this.
It's a complete, because once, once that contractual obligation has been met, it goes away with that, that obligation. That original says, it's not forever on that piece of property, it's just while the current owners own it, once they decide to sell it, if we do not try to, if we choose not to engage the right of, the first right of refusal in purchase, then it, it goes and it never, you never have it. And, and that's okay, I mean, the, the thing is, is it's continuing to create jobs and it's not gonna, not gonna close.
No, I'm not, I, okay, my thought is, okay, so let's say they do, they sell it to the new guy, and the new guy keeps it open for two years, and then he says, okay, I'm done, I'm gonna sell it to somebody else, would we get another chance? Could we put that in there that we would want another chance before they sold it again?
We'd have to enter a new contract.
You'd have to enter a new contract.
What's his name? Josh?
Josh, you'd have to enter a new contract with the, with the current owner.
But that way, at least they would give us that courtesy, possibly.
But, you know, the, the, the challenge is, that is a very unique building, and when it was built in two thousand two, it was built specifically for a cabinet shop. So, other industrial type uses are, need buildings that have a higher sidewall on them, so that's a very unique fit for that building. So, you know, I would say that typically, in, in, you know, since nobody's brought this up, it may affect the potential sale of that property, even though we're not trying to engage the, or utilize the first right of refusal to try to ask for another one, cause that's not how those work. It's one and done, so.
So, um, what was the last part, what Johnny said, he, so now he's saying we're, we're having to buy it? But, read Johnny's statement again, cause he made two sentences.
He said, the board can either decide tonight to buy the property back for three hundred thousand,
Okay.
or approve the quitclaim deed to give up the right of first refusal.
So, you're giving, if, if you don't plan on buying it, you give up the right of
So, yeah, well, I'm not understanding.
Where do we need to be spending?
If we buy it back, then he can come.
Well, I mean, if we have, you know, there's no other, and it's, it's gonna continue to create jobs, they're gonna continue as they operate currently, and they, several employees out there not to disrupt any of that, very grateful they're here, they're the only cabinet shop in town.
This, Josh just wants us to say, I just want, he wants to buy, it's a, a family deal, a family transfer almost. But, uh, he just, he just wanted to buy from him. Then we're out, if we allow this.
Yeah, so it's kinda scary, though.
Well, I'm just, I was just looking at that, I don't know that that place is, if we would, I don't know that there would ever be a need where it sits, that we would ever want that back.
Well, part of that was the original piece of the Light Industrial Park, and that was just one of the stipulations that they put in there, that
I know, but it's sitting right there at the community center, you know?
Well, it's pretty far back there, I mean.
Close enough to me, I mean, you know, I'm, I'm just, that'll, okay.
Yeah. That's, that's the layout of it, that's the little community buildings up there, and that little piece is right back there, so, I don't know.
I know, 'cause I walked back there one day when I was out on my walk, and it, it
Yeah, I know, I know what they're talking about, yeah.
Yeah, I went in it, Carol and I went in it a couple of years ago and, and visited with some folks in there.
Uh, I'll make a motion to extinguish the right of first refusal contained in the deed.
Have a motion, do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Have a motion, second, roll call please.
It's one point five two acres is how much it sits on, so it's pretty small.
Mr. Cheryl?
Yes.
Ms. McGee?
I'm gonna abstain.
Ms. Poe?
Yes.
Mr. Kathy?
Yes.
Okay, item number six, discussion and/or action to go through tops to purchase a digital sign for the stage for, from sign, the sign machine in the amount of ninety-three thousand dollars.
Oh, wow, what kind of sign you putting up there?
Oh, ninety-three thousand sign.
Holy.
Uh, so, in, in able to, uh,
Do we got a picture? Do we got a picture?
Get this purchase done, uh, before the first of the month, uh, we, we had to go through TOPS uh, to be able to get approval to do through that purchasing method. Uh, there's a chance that this could be subject to tariffs if we waited any longer. Uh, and this was something that, uh, Brian and Kobe are more familiar with this type of sign. They're, the banks have used these signs before, and they bought them for, uh, schools, uh, and stuff, so they, they can answer more of the.
What's it look like?
So, it will.
Is this it?
That's what I was looking for with the pictures. I wanted it.
Well, all you're gonna see is a screen.
It could be set up outside.
It is a, it is a digital screen, and it is all, it will look like, it is made up of modular components of panels that all interlock into a frame, and then they build an additional frame around that to mount to the, to the wall of the structure. And if you see, when you leave here or not, you'll see the case opening around the brickwork. That was, that will be completely filled with a screen.
And it's, would you say nine and a half?
Nine and a, it's, it's. Yeah, it's nine and a half feet by, by nineteen feet.